So, all right, so I'm going to officially call the May 5th, 2021 meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission to order. I guess before we can get started officially, I need to announce because this meeting is being held virtually that the meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means. And all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/pc and on Falls Church City Television, which you can watch on Cox Channel 11, or CN Channel 2, or Verizon FiOS Channel 35. Public comments are accepted virtually. Those who have signed up to speak via the meeting video platform, to speak on a public hearing item or provide general public comment, you should have completed a speaker form at www.fallschurchva.gov-publiccomment before noon today. Following the submission of that form, you should have received, I know I'm reading this kind of now that that time has passed, but you should have received email instructions on how to join the virtual Planning Commission meeting. You can also provide written comments in advance of the meeting, which are accepted at the email address plan@fallschurchva.gov. Those are also accepted until noon on the day of the meeting. And those comments that are received by noon are sent to the Planning Commission and are summarized here at the meeting. So with that, I'll ask, I guess, is Mr. Fuller or Mr. Holleran who's going to call the roll tonight?
Mr. Holleran will.
Ms. Comart?
Here.
Ms. Weiss?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Puentez?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
I am here. All right. So we'll move along here, and then the next item, of course, is adoption of the agenda. Discuss this agenda with Mr. Stoddard. I had no issues with the order as presented, so unless anybody else does, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda tonight as printed.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by, I'm sorry, I just couldn't, again, I can't see.
Seconded by Ms. Weiss.
Okay, good, and that'll help out, Mr. Holleran, I guess, to take notes. Okay, any discussion? If not, Mr. Holleran, did you call the roll?
Mr. Puentez?
Yes.
Ms. Comart?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes. All right, great. So we've adopted the agenda, and we will proceed. Hopefully, tonight's meeting, we have a few things tonight, but hopefully it'll be quite as lengthy as the last two were. So, first thing, of course, is any receipt of petitions for items not on the agenda. Mr. Holleran, anything that fits that category?
No.
Okay, good. So we will move right ahead to action items. And our first item for action items is our public hearing on the 128 South Spring Street Special Use Permit. And this is in front of us for a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I believe what we'll do is we'll start with a staff report.
All right, hello, guys. Cameron Garrus here, and I'll start us off. Get up myself. As you said, this agenda items in regard to 128 South Spring Street Special Use Permit to allow a daycare facility on a residential R1A zoning property. The proposed motion is I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Zoning Appeals of U1623-21 to allowance of 128 South Spring Street to operate as a daycare facility within R1A low-density residential zoning as a conditional use of a special use permit subject to the following conditions. One, that operating hours will be limited between 7:00 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. daily. Two, a maximum of four teachers and/or staff will be permitted at any given time. Three, a maximum of 39 students will be permitted at any given time. Four, on-street parking, staff will not park directly in front of residential homes nearby the daycare facility, instead be limited to areas adjacent to the park on public streets. Five, onsite parking will be limited to parents and visitors only, and staff will rely on a on-street parking unless they have to use ADA parking space onsite. Six, onsite parking and pickup-drop-off areas will be clearly delineated and signed to ensure pedestrian safety during pickup and drop-off. As was mentioned, this is a request for Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which will occur on May 13th for action item. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed motion. The only additional information staff has received from the applicant since April 21st meeting, work session is attached in the email statement, attachment number four, as well as another attachment which was uploaded more recently, which is Parking Plan Version May 3rd, which provides further explanation regarding parking and pickup and drop-off procedures. At the April 21st work session, Planning Commission raised several issues regarding daycare size, parking, traffic impacts, and some operational details along with how the pickup and drop-off would work. Those comments are summarized in the background section of the report. And in response to feedback, staff has provided the conditions listed above for the applicant, including in the motion for the Planning Commission's consideration of approval. Jeff, if you could open up the Parking Plan Version May 3rd, I will provide a brief, thank you. I'll provide, can you get to page four, please? I believe it is. It has a drawing. Or, actually, it was a different attachment. It was more recently uploaded by Emily today, I think.
Hang on, Cameron, let me.
Sure.
Is it a?
Emily has put in there today.
Was it in the folder?
It should be in the folder, yeah.
I have an email. I just have the four attachments in the folder.
Okay. Well, I'll give a brief explanation. The attachment email will work fine. I'll talk from that, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Wells to give some further explanation if needed. Right now, the parking plan, drop-off and pickup, the parents will be instructed to use the lot, which is about 3,600 square feet, in kind of a counterclockwise kiss-and-ride fashion, which will allow for about 13 cars at a time. Staff will be out to greet children and parents and to monitor child safety and compliance with parking policy. Drop-off and pickup times may also be staggered in small increments via text communication to allow that there's not too much buildup or any backlog on the street. And this parking policy will be communicated with staff and parents beforehand to ensure compliance. And applicant goes in further detail, but Ms. Wells, if you're on the call, would you like to add further explanation?
Mr. Garrus, maybe before we do that and go to the applicant, maybe we should just wait and see. I know I have some questions for staff. And I don't know if other commissioners do too, maybe before we hear, maybe ultimately, some of the answers need to come from the applicant, but I may let other commissioners go first, but I have a number of questions related to that plan. And I think we, I think the public and the commission has that attachment you're talking about. It's uploaded as Item 6A, number five. It's like, it has like a written-out, you know, plan, and then some Google Street images, and then like a hand-drawn graphic. Is that?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, I would just tell you that I don't know if the geometry would actually work the way it has been drawn on that Image 3 sketch. I don't think there's enough room for vehicles to actually make that movement the way it's drawn like that. I also don't think that the curb cut is quite wide enough to allow like two cars to come and go at the same time, the way that's been drawn. I don't know. Has anyone actually looked at that? I know that was hand-drawn, I presume by the applicant, but there we go. I just don't, I'm just not clear that that's actually wide enough to make the turning radius, especially for larger vehicles, which most parents drive these days. They're not driving sedans. They're driving large, medium and large-sized SUVs and minivans. So I have serious concerns about the feasibility of that. And it also doesn't address the situation as far as ages of children. These children are on car seats. Not typically a kiss-and-ride type of scenario unless you, you know, I don't know how the youngest children would be, but, you know, below about age four, you probably are going to have kids who are not able to unbuckle themselves from a car seat or a booster seat, so people will need to park. So anyhow, I mean, that drawing just raises a whole host of issues for me, but maybe before I go through any other of my comments, I'll open it up to the, if staff is done with their presentation, I would open it up to other commissioners if they have any other questions or comments for staff. Tim, Mr. Stevens just raised his hand.
Yes, I just had one question, Mr. Garrus. I see that the staff has proposed reducing the limit on the number of children to, I believe it's 39, and that's down from the current, or what used to be, or the request used to be at 49, so it's come down. Question I have is, was there a limit on the previous operation of the childcare at this facility?
I'm not sure that there was a hard limit in place in terms of a policy, but I believe the previous daycare facility had, I think, a cap of 25, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Wells, but 25.
So this would be a bigger operation then?
Yes. And in regards for, I'll just give some brief follow-up with the question with the kiss-and-ride. You are correct that the intention is that many of these children will not be able to obviously get out of the car themselves unless they're, I went to school age, so that these cars would be parked, the parents themselves would be helping children strollers up the ramp, as well as rotation of the four staff members to come out, help as well, and to get the children inside and cars move along as quickly as possible. And to kind of follow this rotation. The average turn radius of like passenger vehicle was about 35 feet. We have 45 feet here. I'm not really, I'm not certain, I can't speak for larger vans or trucks, or see if that would accommodate that. Maybe tight. But if you're kind of keeping along the perimeter, it could accommodate most smaller vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, just to interject, I mean, it also, it presumes that the lot is obviously empty. And then, you know, other folks have to park, like staff, and, you know, need to park then somewhere else, and this lot needs to be cleared at that time. And I don't know that the previous daycare operate this way. I mean, it just seems like that would be difficult on this lot. I mean, I don't know, you know, I don't know. It just seems that like it might not work because, you know, based on the number of, I mean, I don't know, depending on the number of people that were arriving at one time. I know they talk about staggering, but it just doesn't seem very realistic. And also, the curb cut just seems narrow. I don't know how well you could have two cars passing each other in order to make these movements. So again, like, also partially the problem is the lot itself. Obviously, it's not well-defined. It's gravel. There are a few curb blocks, I guess, but I don't know. I mean, it just seems that this may not work. I'm just not so sure that this has been drawn like really accurately. I mean, it was a good attempt to try to like simulate what could happen, I suppose, but but anyhow, I just have some doubts about it and some concerns that this could actually be implemented the way it's shown. Ms. Weiss had her hand up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is just a question, and, you know, I wish I'd asked this this last time, but just so I understand, special use permits, this site was a daycare previously. So is there already a special use permit in place for this site for a daycare?
I don't believe so. I think the, I believe the last facility was not a full daycare facility. I believe it was a childcare center, but did not have the full special use permit. I'm not so sure, I'll have to come back with that answer.
That would be, yeah, it would be good to know, because I just, I think, yeah, it would be good to know if that exists already. And just my understanding is that a special use permit attaches to a site, not to a specific business. I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but that would be my understanding. So my question is, what's already in place? I think in terms of, you know, the neighbors being accustomed to daycare, there's certainly that experience, but, you know, it'd be good to understand what was permitted and really understanding the difference between the number of kids that were there before and when there was drop-off previously. I think there probably would be some appreciation for traffic calming that drop-off and pickup would allow for, but if this is going from like a 25 kids being dropped off in the morning to, you know, 39, that's a material difference, and having a more clear plan, I think, would be necessary. I know from my experience dropping off my kiddos at Communicas, kiss-and-ride can work with the seat, with the car seat age, with teachers grabbing them out of the car, and so that is a possibility, and there might be other ways to do this, but yeah, I just wanted to understand really better what was going on in the site previously in terms of permitted uses and number of kids and hours of operation.
Sorry, Ms. Comart had her hand up.
Hi, sorry, I lost my connection briefly, so I don't know if somebody's made this point, but in my experience, dropping my kids off at daycare in Clarendon, which was very busy and very well-populated, it was very rare that everybody was sort of arriving at the exact same moment. And so I think that, you know, parents kind of come, you know, throughout a window of maybe 30. I mean, depending on exactly what the hours are, it could be, you know, as long as like a two-hour window that people would be dropping off. And my understanding from the applicant is that some of these, the younger children would actually be accompanied by their their parents or caregivers for programming at the school. I might want to hear a little more about that exactly, so there wouldn't really be a drop-off situation in that. So I guess what I'm saying is I don't actually think there will be 13 cars in that lot, sort of in a little semicircle at one point in time. That seems unlikely to me.
Okay, thank you.
And I, sorry, I just want to also second Ms. Weiss's comments about understanding whether there is still a special use permit in place, and also the maximum number of students that were served with the previous daycare operation. That would be helpful information to know for comparison. But my understanding from neighbors to the previous daycare is that it operated very well, and there were no concerns on the street.
Right. And I, thank you, Ms. Comart. I believe staff maybe can correct me if I'm wrong. I thought Mr. Stoddard, somebody mentioned last time that there had been a daycare that operated up until some point in the past, but, you know, especially use permits do expire. You know, they don't run forever. The use ceases to operate typically for like, anywhere from like, usually around two years. I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe is, but they do typically expire. And I thought Mr. Stoddard had said that either they weren't able to locate a formal approval of the previous one and/or it had expired. Is that right, Mr. Garrus? I thought Mr. Stoddard had mentioned that.
That does sound right. I believe that, from my knowledge, that it was 25 kids in the past had been at the daycare, and that it had been at least a decade since it operated. So that would certainly have a time of expiration there.
Right, yeah, that's what, I mean, I recall Mr. Stoddard mentioning that, so that sounds about right. Well, all right, no one else has their hand up. I mean, we can definitely, we will hear from the applicant, and I guess it's also a public hearing, and we can go through any public comments we've got, but I suppose, and ultimately, the BZA, I guess, needs to make the decision, but if we're going to give the BZA solid recommendations, I guess, there's kind of two ways to handle, you know, the issue of parking. Either, it's kind of either war, right? It's either going to be a pickup-drop-off, kiss-and-ride line, or kiss-and-go-to-daycare line, or it's going to be people actually parking and bringing the kids inside. And I guess, because I know the applicant in her statement mentions like several options. I mean, she even talks about like staff parking at the Legion, which is kind of far away, but, you know, renting spaces there. And so like, I'm seeing like lots of different information in her statement, and I appreciate the additional detail over what we had last time, but I guess I'm just not clear what the actual plan is, you know, is it this? Is it kiss-and-ride, or is it people parking? Because I know we talked about also the fact that the use, regardless, you know, has a parking requirement, you know, based on the zoning ordinance, and they have to provide the requisite number of spaces. And that was based on like the square footage, or staff, or whatever it was. And so we wanted to also make sure that the use can, you know, meet the requirement. But if it's like in a, if it's this kind of configuration, well, no one's parking in the parking lot. If they're using it like this, you know, in the morning and the afternoon, I guess people could park there in the middle of the day, I guess. But anyhow, I don't know if staff or the applicant's better to answer that, but I just, I'm looking for some clarity on what the actual proposal is.
I believe that in the paper, she had mentioned that, applicant had mentioned that there is currently three employees she has who would live close enough, they actually plan to walk to work, and that applicant herself plans to park on Irving, walk through the, walk to the Scout House from there. And in the future, if an employee would need to drive to work and public transit was not an option, and that they would have to find a spot to park along the parcel that wouldn't be impactful to neighbors.
Okay. But they still, of course, have to meet like the, and that's great, that helps, but they still have to show that they have the agreement on parking. I thought Mr. Stoddard mentioned, you know, I spoke to him, you know, offline from the meeting, and I thought he mentioned that you guys had determined that you, you know, that the building could meet it based on the number of spaces in the lot. But again, I'm not seeing that, like, you know, expanded upon in the documents we got today. So I just want to confirm that, that you guys have in fact confirmed that there's the number of spaces that the ordinance would require for the daycare use to operate there. Because that's kind of like a threshold issue. If they don't have that, right, how can John Boyle issue like a use permit, you know, if they can't meet the parking?
She does also have a note that the president of the Scout House Association, Tim Lewis, had confirmed that previously 10 cars could fit comfortably, as well as two dedicated handicap bike spaces.
Okay. So it would be 12 spots, and I guess the question is, is that enough? Ms. Teetz just had her hand go up. Ms. Teetz?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about my experiences with Easter Seals, which used to be on Cherry Street, and then we moved over off of Hillwood, which had a much smaller area to turn around and had twice as many kids. I just want to reiterate, usually not all the parents arrive at the same time. It's pretty staggered, sometimes over two hours. Because Easter Seals opened like 7:30, but parents dropped off anywhere between 7:30 and 9:30, counting on, you know, when their day started. So I just don't think it's, I think that in terms of drop-off and everything, there's plenty of room there. I've used the Scout House for big events, where I've had like 45 Girl Scouts in the back in the grassy area doing stuff, and we didn't have any trouble with drop-off. My main issue was the number of kids inside, because the inside isn't that big, and since they've changed that number, I'm okay with, I think this is fine. I think it will work out fine. I don't think it's going to cause any kind of hardship for the neighborhood, really. I think they'll be able to drop off, and like I said, it'll be staggered. It just won't, I don't think it'll be a big issue.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Teetz. I appreciate your perspective. And I'm not trying to be, again, you know, saying that it can't work here. It's just, you know, I'm trying to more, since we don't have a lot of special use permits, I'm just trying to get a sense of what we require of people and, you know, what kind of basic information they need to show that they meet, and, you know, the kind of stuff to help inform the BZA. I'm just trying to get a sense of, I mean, I see the conditions that staff has proposed, you know, in the motion, and so I'm assuming those conditions are, you know, staff is saying with those limits, that they feel that everything is going to work fine. And that may be the case, but I just want to make sure that we're, you know, not overlooking stuff. So now, okay, so with that, though, we haven't heard from the applicant yet, and I mean, I want to give, I apologize, I can't find her name in here. Is the applicant on the call here in the meeting?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, I want to, yeah, so, yeah, go ahead. Let's give you an opportunity to speak, whatever you'd like to present.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm Lisa Wills, and I want to thank you for this opportunity and your time to work with me, to make this nature-focused children's program available to the Falls Church community. We all know that this area has a consistently high demand for childcare services, and the need for children to have social time with peers had never seemed more important. As we move out of this pandemic, one thing we have learned is the value of outdoor programs like this one with a focus on the natural world. I'm personally committed to this project as a preschool teacher, childcare provider, and childcare business operator. My experience gives me an understanding of child programs and childcare needs, and also the ability to manage community needs and keep good relations for things like neighborhood traffic and parking. With our focus on nature, we will strongly encourage environmental alternatives like walk, bike, carpool, and public transit. However, I know from experience that it depends on family logistics and things like the weather, and it is important to have a plan for clients using their cars. The most recent parking plan I submitted to you on May 3rd has more details. And here are a few key points. I practiced with other teachers parking on this gravel area with our bigger cars and our kiss-and-ride proposed program. My goal is to have good neighbor relations and avoid inconvenience to them, to maintain safety, and to have an efficient and organized process. We will have a clearly stated policies for staff parking, client parking, and drop-off, pickup, and visitor parking. Third, for example, for client families, part of the enrollment process will be to review the parking transportation policies, including for pickup and drop off and agree to them as a condition of enrollment. Fourth, for child pickup and drop off, the gravel parking area next to the scout house can accommodate about 13 cars at any one time. If you see the image, that's three that I did this little sketch. I practiced that with other teachers and we were able to do that. So you know, pickup, drop off will start from the tree on the left side. If you see the images four and five. And the reason for that, the following cars will make a U shape. Uh, it will be prohibited to block the sidewalk or to idle or park on Spring Street for pickup, drop off. Also, drivers will be instructed to approach pickup, drop off from the north, from Broad Street, going south on Spring Street and make a right turn into the site. If you see the images, image six, that's a little map. Pickup, drop off can be, can be staggered in small increments, so the cars do not exceed the capacity at any one time. That will be on hand to manage the process and ensure compliance. I'm exploring environmentally responsible options for signage and directional guide marks in the gravel area and will coordinate this with the property owners. We will continue to inform clients about the parking and drop off pickup rules and a good neighbor policy both during enrollment and in regular reminder such as emails, newsletters. Uh, I will also regularly reach out to our neighbors to find out if they're experiencing any inconveniences related to our program. On a few other issues, I do understand your suggestion that the approved number could be 39 and that the childcare office will make the final decision about the numbers and age of children and make necessary adjustments. I also wanted to tell you that I appreciate your efforts about the hours of operations and it makes so much sense to plan for that possibility of longer hours. I also wanted to tell you that for parent caregiver conferences or special meetings, these will be scheduled outside of regular pickup, drop off times to allow for parking in the gravel area. Uh, visitors, guests will be informed ahead of time of nearby public parking options, public transit and walk and bike options. And with our good neighbor policy, they will be discouraged, discouraged from parking in front of nearby residences. You also mentioned that I'm in conversation with American Legion. Uh, by my previous experience, I worked in a preschool, 130 children and almost entirely kiss and ride, pick up and drop off with ages of two years through kindergarten. And it takes us approximately, it took us approximately 10 minutes with minimum disruption to the neighborhood or the street traffic law to do all this procedure. This worked very smoothly due to having additional staff on hand. I, I really wanted to thank you for all your work that you put into this project. Project, I'm open to suggestions about this plan. If you can please let me know if I can provide you with anything else.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wills. That, that was, that was very helpful. I see someone's hand is up. I apologize. Now I can't see whose hand is up. Thanks. I, someone's hand is raised, but again, because the bug we're having with teams, I can't see whose hand it is. So it's up to forgive me.
It's, it's Melissa's hand. She might get down there.
Okay. All right. Well, I was just going to say if any commissioners have any questions for Ms. Wills? Any questions for her? All right. No, no questions for her. So Mr. Garrus, just because it is a public hearing, did we receive any public comment on, on this, on this action item?
No, we have not.
Okay. Thank you. Just, just checking. So, all right. So I mean, I, I appreciate what Ms. Wills said and I, I also appreciate the experience that other folks who know the site have had in using the site, you know, in this, in this way. Um, I guess, you know, just for me, and if staff could just, again, run through the conditions again that you're proposing, I mean, to me, they, I think they do hit on what we're, what we're trying to hit on. And I know the BZA will ultimately, you know, I guess they can tweak these if they'd like, but if we could just run through the conditions and make sure everybody, you know, is clear on them and if there are any concerns or questions about that.
Sure thing. First condition is regarding operating hours to be limited to 7:00 AM to 6:30 PM daily. Second is a maximum of four teachers and or staff permitted at any given time. Third, a maximum of 39 students permitted and given time. Four, regarding on-street parking, staff will not park directly in front of residential homes nearby the daycare facility and instead be limited areas adjacent to the park on public streets. Five, on-street parking will be limited to parents and visitor only and staff will rely on on-street parking unless they have to use an ADA parking space onsite. Six, onsite parking, pickup, drop off areas will be clear, clearly delineated and signed to ensure pedestrian safety during pickup and drop off.
Uh, excuse me, can I just ask one more thing?
Is that, is that Ms. Wills?
Yes.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to ask, uh, I would like to request the ability to hire at least one or two additional staff in case there is any need to make this process go more quickly without compromising any safety, especially for children. You know, by my experience, you know, we can always ask parent or caregiver, but I would like to avoid doing that because I really don't want to rely on parent caregiver, uh, you know, help of ability as a primary solution to get them out of the car, you know, to get the children out of the car. So I would like to see if you can consider that request, please.
Mr. Garrus, where did the number four for staff or teachers come from?
I, I believe it was, um, the given three employees that are currently employed as well as Ms. Wills herself. And that, that would be a the original, that original request for amount of staff.
So that came from, that came from, from, from the applicant?
Just, just one more point if I can make, you know, because the ratio, I want to be within the ratio. And the ratio for toddlers, 16 months to 23 months is one to five. Two years, one to eight. Three years is one to 10, school age children, one to 20. So I would just like to have an extra staff if there is any need for, especially for drop off and pickup procedure.
I submit, Mr. Garrus, right. So that number came from, you, you were just essentially memorializing what the applicant initially indicated. Now they're saying six. Would that change staff's recommendation in any way? Are you comfortable with six staff?
We, we'll be comfortable with additional two employees, um, given the fact that what is item, uh, for, for that staff would be parking on adjacent, uh, park or public streets.
Okay. Miss Coleman, I see you just raised your hand.
I did. I just want to say, I think Ms. Wills's request is reasonable and I'm actually wondering if we need to include a li- limit on the number of teachers or staff for, for any reason, if we're already, as Mr. Haller points out, including sort of some restrictions on where the staff can park. I don't know that it's up to us to say how many staff she should or should not have. We've already, there's already a limit on the number of students. So I think it should be up to her. Um, depending on the ages of the students, the ratios will vary. And so I, I just wouldn't want to limit her ability to operate effectively by limiting her number of staff to a particular number.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Weiss, you're going to just want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. I mean, I, um, she'll need to follow daycare regulations in terms of number of staff and without knowing the precise mix of age groups at this point in time, you know, in the absence of a and then I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't want to limit it aside from whatever daycare regulations would require. Otherwise she'll have to come back.
Right. And I guess it's, I mean, if we're limiting the maximum number of children, I mean, to some extent, there's like then the theoretical maximum of staff that would sort of derive from that. So I'm, I would tend to agree. I mean, I know obviously teachers will need to park, but I think by limiting the number of students to 39, I think it kind of puts a natural, you know, a theoretical cap on the number of teachers that could ever be there to something less than 10, um, even if they, even in, even in the most sort of extreme ratio with all very young kids. So yeah, so I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I guess we'll wait and see who makes a motion and, and, um, we can, we can tweak, tweak that. But I, I don't, I personally don't have a problem with, with that. I mean, the only other question I have, although maybe before I keep on talking, does anyone else have any other sort of comments, questions they want to make on this before we kind of formally figure out this motion? Okay. I guess my only other question then, and maybe it's more for staff is, I just want to make sure, I mean, I understand like it seems like they're, they're sort of anticipating or trying to have different options for parking and we're talking about onsite parking limited to parents, but then again, the applicant showing like a, like a more of a, you know, in a drop off scenario and not even, not even really parking. Because the only, and the reason that's important is because either the spots need to be, like the lot needs to essentially be empty in order for cars to kind of do that circulation pattern. You know, and or, you know, or it's, or it's a different kind of school and people park and bring their kids in and sign them in or whatever they do. And, and you know, there's just a different way to operate. So I don't know, you know, again, if Steph has a sort of opinion on that, um, what's more sort of realistic? I mean, to some degree, like the parents parking and walking the kids in is probably, I don't know, it seems more realistic, but, but, uh, than, than having like a true kiss and ride line, like, like navigate that little lot. But I don't know, I don't know if anyone else has an opinion on that. I mean, the way the conditions are, Mr. Garrus, we're kind of saying that, you know, we're kind of like, I don't know, I guess you're mentioning both options, but they certainly couldn't happen at the same time. You couldn't have a couple of people who want to park in the lot and then it could also run during that time because you need to keep it open for that circulation. So I don't know what we want to do with that. Ms. Coleman?
I just say, I, yeah, I, I think it's good to know that both options are possible. Um, and I think it might be up to the applicant and the programming that they develop and to find the option that works the best, whether that's, you know, parents are coming over a two hour period of drop off or pickup and it's fine to have people kind of park and bring their children in or if they need some sort of more organized, um, kiss and ride procedure as outlined in the, um, diagram, which I just want to compliment you on the beautiful drawing in that diagram. I really enjoyed the cars and the tree. So well, well done.
Oh, thank you so much. And I really appreciate you, you know, allowing me to hire more staff because that's very important for this program.
Okay. So with that, I guess, I'll look for somebody who's feels up to making a motion on this. And we can tweak the conditions, I guess, as part, whoever makes that motion can, can, you know, adjust as they see fit. Ms. Coleman, is your hand up to do that?
I can do it. Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll try. This is my first motion as a planning commission member. So bear with me. Um, I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the Board of Zoning Appeals of U1623-21 for allowance of 128 South Spring Street to operate as a daycare facility within R-1A. Low density residential zoning is a conditional use of a special use permit subject to the following conditions. One, operating hours will be limited to between 7:00 AM and 6:30 PM daily. Will strike number two, I'm not going to read it. Uh, three, a maximum of 39 students will be permitted at any time. Four, for on-street parking, staff will not park directly in front of residential homes nearby the daycare facility and instead be limited to areas adjacent to the park on public streets. Five, onsite parking will be limited to parents and visitors only and staff will rely on on-street parking unless they have to use the ADA parking space onsite. Six, onsite parking and pickup, drop off areas will be clearly delineated and signed to ensure pedestrian safety during pickup and drop off.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Stevens, your hand is up. Is that second?
Yeah, I, I can second it. I also wanted to, um, just, just make a comment that kind of the outstanding issue is the one that Commissioner Weiss has, which is, is there already some special use, uh, conditional permit on this property? I, I don't know if we need that before we go ahead and make our recommendation, but you know, this is, this is kind of preponderance of evidence here is the way I look at this and, and you know, I we may not necessarily have to have all of those details because we know that this has operated as a daycare in the past. So we can take some comfort from that. But I, I just wanted to raise that as an issue. Otherwise, I'm, I'm comfortable with the seconding the, the motion.
This is Ms. Tease. I just, so you guys know technically special permits have to be redone. They, they don't last forever. Most of them have a two or three year lifespan and then they're supposed to be reapplied for. Now, we don't, a lot of times we let people roll. But yeah, if there was a special permit in the past, it's probably no longer functional.
Yeah, I think Ms. Tease is probably right. For what it's worth, I think that especially if it's been some time since it operated, they also usually expire. They don't run with the land forever. And so, and even if, if there somehow was, I mean, this one would essentially supersede that. This would almost be like an amendment to that and supersede it. So, um, and ultimately the BZA, I guess, will have to, you know, chew on that issue. But I, I think that we're good to, to make the recommendation based on this. I don't think there is a valid one anymore, in my opinion. Ms. Weiss?
I wanted to ask a question about onsite parking being limited to parents and visitors only. In, in the context of, of, you know, that, you know, either there's kiss and ride or there's onsite parking. And I just wonder if number five is a decision that the applicant should make depending on the business model and the programming. And the reason being that if there is, if some reason kiss and ride does work and parents and visitors aren't doing a lot of parking there, might it make sense for staff to park onsite? I, I guess my question is in the context of zoning and we're talking, you know, like four, five, six staff. You know, is it, is it a problem to grant the flexibility to figure out where staff park? Do we need number five is my question?
Yeah, Ms. Weiss, I would say, that's a good point. If it, well, I guess the, the question, you know, we, we obviously is more, if we know which, which model of, of operation that, that ultimately would be implemented, it would be easier to answer that. I mean, I guess right in theory, you know, if, if, if the staff could park in the lot now, if they did park in the lot during the day, they'd have to move their cars if they wanted to do kiss and ride. So it's right, the two don't, that's the problem. The lot is not big enough to accommodate, you know, people parking there um, at the same time as that. So I, I suppose we could maybe tweak number five, um, to, to maybe allow for flexibility. Um, I don't know. Ms. Coleman, your hand just went back up.
Just, uh, just want to say I would be comfortable with striking number five to give the applicant more flexibility. If, if I can amend my motion.
Uh, you can, you can amend your motion if that's, so you, it sounds like you've just amended it. Mr. Stevens then as the seconder would need to. Mr. Stevens, then as the seconder, would need to second your amendment, so to speak.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, so now we have, uh, the amended motion with it, which is with a second. Um, just so we're clear, so we're keeping number one, we deleted two, we keep three, we keep four, we delete five, and we keep six. Um, and, uh, right, so as long as everybody's clear. So is there any further discussion on the motion to recommend to the BZA with these conditions as, as revised, as discussed? Ms. Weiss?
I'm sorry, I do have one more question. Uh, nearby, I'm just in number four. Staff will not park directly in front of residential homes nearby the daycare facility. That's kind of a vague term. Do we need to define that?
Well, that's, that's a good question. I mean, I, I agree, it's subject to determine, it's interpretation about what's nearby. And I think, I guess, I think staff is trying to say, you know, we're trying to avoid the situation where neighbors, you know, have, have a staff person's car in front of their house all day long. Um, granted, it is a public street, but, you know, we, we obviously would want to minimize, you know, any negative effects on them. I mean, it gets to what are the options they have? I mean, are there enough spaces in front of the, the parkland or the not, you know, not in front of single-family homes to accommodate the kind of staff that she's looking at? And that's a question for staff. Is there enough, is there enough on-street parking not in front of the houses in that, along, you know, in that area there to accommodate that? Is that realistic?
There's enough, there's enough space on-street parking along the parcel to accommodate, um, probably comfortably, uh, four spaces, maybe not, maybe not six for, six-plus for staff. Um, but certainly that would be a space for, uh, certain staff members to park there, but not all.
Okay, so in some ways then we, knowing that, then four kind of isn't workable if they want to do the drop-off, the, the, you know, the, the carpool line or whatever, the drop-off line, uh, because then staff can't be in the lot, and they have to be on the street, and they might not be able to find a spot that's not in front of a house. Ms. Coman, your hand just went back up.
There's also, as applicant has noted herself, there's also parking on Irving. You, you are connected right to Irving or really any of the streets on Berman. So I, I think there's ample public parking available near the Scout House. Um, personally, I'm comfortable with the, with the nearby. Um, I, I imagine if, if the BZA wanted to be more specific, then they could maybe introduce that specificity, but, um, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, well, the question is, like, we're saying they can't park, staff cannot park in front of a house. And so then the question becomes, you know, in that area, most of the curb, you know, most parking spots are in front of somebody's house, except for the Scout House itself and, and, you know, right around that, and right in that area. So if we leave it in there like that and the BZA were adopted, we might have a situation where, you know, by nearby, they'd have to, I don't know, they'd have to sort of use their judgment and park a block or two away, but then they're still in front of somebody's house. I don't know. I mean, in some ways, we need to like, I guess we either need to be comfortable with the fact that staff would park on the street, um, and then maybe we don't even need number four. Um, or we, or we want staff to park off-street and they either have to use the lot or they have to, you know, in, in the applicant's material, she mentioned like some type of satellite parking. I mean, we kind of have to either accept that possibility that there would be on-street parking for some number of staff or, or not, I think. I mean, I think just by the fact that the closest on-street spots are in front of the Scout House, those would probably fill up first, um, so maybe it's okay. Uh, Ms. Weiss, did your hand go back up?
Oh, sorry, that's me. I'll take it down.
No, I, I do have my hand back up. I've, I've got company here as well, so my camera's off for a second. But, um, yeah, I would actually propose striking number four. I mean, it, it would put staff in an awkward position or if they parked half in front of somebody's, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know how important it is. If people are working during the day, I don't know what kind of impact it would be for an additional five or three cars parking on the street sometimes in front of a house.
Okay, uh, so hearing that, so we've heard that opinion, but Ms. Coman, your, your hand is back up. What's your motion, so?
It's my motion, yeah. I just was, I, I would be comfortable with that. I mean, these, these are public streets and it doesn't sound like we're going to have, you know, twenty or thirty staff vehicles and parked on Spring Street for, um, you know, every day, all day long. Um, so to me, uh, and there are ample public parking opportunities, both in front of the Scout House, on Irving Street, nearby, um, in front of other houses. And I, I think giving, giving the applicant the flexibility to, it sounds like she's really committed to making this work for the, the neighborhood, um, for the program to be successful. And, um, so I would be comfortable with also striking number four.
Okay, uh, Mr. Stevens, as the seconder, are you comfortable with striking number four?
Yeah, well, okay, I guess to keep things moving along, I'll, I'll go along with that.
Yeah, I think, all right, so we have a second now, and then just discussion here. I mean, I, I would just chime in that, as I just said, I think, honestly, if, if, if it sounds like they might have as many as six people, even though we're not limiting that, six, six staff, most of the on-street spaces are, that are closest are right in front, and that's where most people would naturally go. So we might be talking about one or two staff, maybe if they ever had that need for them, that might park close by. And, um, I don't know, at least one of the houses right to the north is, is vacant now. So, um, I mean, it may not always be the case, but, but anyhow, um, all right, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm perfectly comfortable with that. Any other discussion? You have a motion, a second? Any other discussion? Okay, so not, no discussion on that. We're gonna, then ask for a roll call on the, on the motion as, as is just amended.
Uh, Mr. Puentez?
Yes.
Ms. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes. All right, that motion passes. Ms. Wills, good luck at the BZA.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so moving right along here. Um, I know that might have been practical longer than we thought, but, uh, that's how it goes. Next item, uh, for a public hearing is, uh, public hearing on the subdivision uh, and lot line adjustment at two-twenty-two West Greenway Boulevard and two-twenty-one West Cameron Road.
Uh, yeah, um, so that's actually, uh, one of mine. Um, I'll just go through the staff report briefly with you. Um, so tonight's, uh, the planning commission has requested to hold a public hearing to consider approval, uh, of the preliminary and final subdivision plat for the property located at two-twenty-two West Greenway Falls Church, uh, which also includes a lot line adjustment with the neighboring property at two-twenty-one West Cameron Road. Uh, staff is recommending, uh, that the planning commission grant preliminary and final plat approval of a subdivision, uh, of two-twenty-two West, uh, uh, that should be two-twenty-two West Greenway Road, uh, Boulevard, uh, with conditions noted in the, uh, in the recommended motion, uh, see above. And, and we did make some edits, uh, already, uh, to the motion. Um, I did send that out, uh, to planning commissioners and the applicant earlier today. Uh, we can go over that in a minute. Um, the, the work session on April twenty-first, uh, twenty-twenty-one brought up a couple of, of points about the subdivision. Uh, first of all, street addressing was, uh, was an issue that has since been resolved. Uh, staff has looked into it and the, the, the street to the north, uh, has, uh, has been identified as Seton Lane as opposed to, uh, a leg of West Greenway, uh, or I'm sorry, of West Cameron. Um, so, uh, uh, so that will be, uh, if there's signage there that needs to be adjusted, uh, we are working to do that. Uh, the, the applicant has also adjusted these on their, uh, on revised plats as well. Um, of much discussion too is the sidewalk reference in the staff comments should be included. Um, the applicant, uh, had provided us, uh, at the time of distribution, of material distribution, uh, the applicant had, uh, submitted a sidewalk sketch. Uh, they have since submitted a amended plat with the sidewalk included that was sent out, uh, today as well. Uh, we also had a, a, a discussion about public noticing. Um, staff put a yard sign for this application and is, uh, and is preparing an order for extra yard signs, um, so that they can be readily available for future applications. Uh, and that, those will go up, uh, earlier on in the process. Uh, so a little bit more about, uh, the subdivision. Now, the subject property at two-twenty-two West Greenway includes two underlying lots of record. However, the lots are, as recorded, are substandard for lot area frontage. Uh, therefore, the applicant has filed for a lot line adjustment to incorporate access land area from a neighboring third lot to meet lot area requirements and a subdivision to reorient the lots, uh, to meet frontage requirements. Um, the subdivision with, uh, the associated lot line adjustment, uh, does meet requirements of the city, uh, in zoning code. The, uh, twenty-two, uh, two-twenty-two West Greenway is under ownership by Michael L. Britton. Uh, existing structures on the property consist of a one-point-five-story frame house with a detached garage. Uh, there's one curb cut for a driveway on the north side, uh, facing what we now know as Seton, uh, Seton Lane. Uh, so sorry, that must be adjusted in the staff report. Uh, the lot line adjustment includes a transfer of, uh, fi- five-hundred-and-four square feet from two-twenty-two West Cameron Road, um, in order for it to meet, uh, the requirements of the subdivision. Uh, the, uh, proposed subdivision, uh, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning code, uh, meets setback requirements. Uh, so staff had reviewed the first submission, uh, before the work session two weeks ago and, and found that it mostly, uh, fell into compliance with, uh, the subdivision chapter of the code. Uh, there was only one comment regarding the construction of sidewalk at the, uh, frontage of the property due to the site's proximity to Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Um, that has since been provided. Uh, and, uh, also, we had one outlining comment from, uh, Public Works. Uh, they just wanted to see where the future curb cuts would be, uh, that has also been provided, uh, to staff. Um, so, uh, like I said, I had, I had distributed the, uh, the, the revised plats only to, uh, only today, uh, to the planning commission. Um, so I can pull those up now to take a look at them. Uh, an initial review, uh, just of, just of today, a, a review of the revised subdivision. Um, staff is, uh, confident that it will meet, uh, the requirements. Uh, they met the Public Works comment and that the, uh, the, the applicant has worked with planning staff as well as the arborist, uh, to work on the, uh, proposed layout for the sidewalk. Um, so that is now being, uh, shown in their revised plats. Uh, we do have Antoinette and, uh, the applicant on the line as well, uh, if they wish to go over anything.
Okay.
This is, I just want to be sure my mic is still, is working this time?
Yes.
Okay, great. I didn't have anything to add to your, I just want to be sure in case I did. Um, but I would say thank you for your time this evening and, and we'll be forward.
All right, uh, Mr. Holler, um, just so I'm clear. So, I mean, you have a, you sent us, you know, also, uh, an amended motion as well. Is that also, right, so that's not been uploaded to the web, right? So what you sent us today in the afternoon, is that still the latest and greatest?
Y- yes, it is. Um, yeah, that was done, uh, really just this afternoon. Um, with, we wanted to make sure that any outlying, uh, condition or, you know, things that need to be changed, uh, for a future submission are shown in the motion. Uh, so we went through and added all of the specific, um, things that we're looking for, uh, most of which are, are fairly minor.
All right, so the plat, but the plat and the motion are, you know, are what you sent out? And so that's what we should be?
Yes.
Should be referring to.
Um, and I will share the, I, I'm going to put the, uh, the amended motion on the screen, um, so that folks can, can read through it. Um, and then if, as soon as you'd like, I can pull up the plats as well.
And you want to run through the changes in the motion now? I don't think, some of them maybe you already did.
Sure. Sure, uh, so, uh, the, the one change that we did is we actually, um, as what is typical for a subdivision is we, uh, we typically farm out naming of the plat, uh, to, um, uh, to the historical commission. And the historical commission did a lot of work, um, a- as far as helping us, uh, to name the, name the plat. And they, they dug up a lot of, uh, great history, uh, on the plat and the area itself. Uh, so when we had sent out, um, this staff report, uh, we were originally going to go with the historical commission's, uh, proposed name, which was Perry Go Tract, um, for a Perry Go family that had lived there many years ago. Um, but since then, uh, staff took another look at it, and this is part of the Greenway Downs overlay. Uh, so we are hoping, uh, in- instead that we will change the name, um, to the Greenway Downs Overlay District, Section Five, instead, um, because I think that that is more consistent with what our, um, staff and city, you know, city assessor would like to see. Um, I, I do think that that was, uh, that was something that was caught by Gary, uh, Gary Fuller, if he, uh, if he has anything to add to that. Uh, otherwise, there are a few, uh, additional conditions down at the bottom you'll read, um, most of which are all, uh, very minor changes that we'd like to see to the final plat. Usually, it's information that's already included in the final plat. Um, but I, I think there was, there was, uh, a- as you can imagine, there was a lot of, um, moving around between the work session and the, and the public hearing to make sure that this information was, um, as up to date for tonight as we could get it. Um, so, so not, uh, so not all of the, uh, little details are included within this final plat, but that's what the condition, uh, the conditions here hope to clear up for us.
Okay. Then Mr. Fuller, whose hand just went up? Ms. Mr. Fuller?
Yes, I, I'll just follow up. The, the, uh, motion tonight is to approve the preliminary and final plats, and these are just, um, administrative items that either we, we, we need final signatures from the owners or we're dislabeling, uh, with notes, some things that, uh, we, we need to note and, and make sure happen. Um, so, you know, we see these as, as routine administrative things we can follow up on. In terms of the naming of the subdivision, actually, there was an existing name already available. Normally, what happens is if it's a unnamed parcel, then we send to the historical commission and then they'll, uh, recommend names. Uh, in this case, it wasn't necessary, and, uh, it's even more confusing to rename, you know, an island in the middle of an already designated area, and it had its own designation. So we just, um, we're straightening that out. So there was no need to rename, so that kind of explains that. So if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fuller, Mr. Holler. Uh, any questions for staff around the commission? Anyone have any questions? Mr. Stevens was first to raise his hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to acknowledge that we did get the letter from Beth Luffington, uh, who lives close by. And, uh, as often the case on these subdivisions for us, you know, our, our, uh, ability to deal with these issues is extremely limited, uh, in terms of what we're being asked to review here. So, uh, just wanted to point that out, to acknowledge the letter, but, you know, there's very little about the issues that, that we can't, uh, do anything about. I would ask staff, though, would they, uh, uh, agree with that? These are all issues that pretty much fall outside of the subdivision, uh, issues that we're dealing with.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, I think Mr. Puentez was next.
Just quickly for Mr. Holler, you mentioned something in your remarks about yard signs going up. I didn't know what that was referring to. Is that, um, just for the neighbors?
Y- yeah, so, um, I, I, I can't remember who had, had brought it up. I thought it was Ms. Weiss, uh, discussing last time about early public notification of these, um, of these types of applications. Um, and, and I, I think the, the planning commission, we had chatted about it a long time ago. I want to say it was back last fall, uh, or that we had talked about, um, how we want to properly notify the public of these types of applications. Um, so signage was, was a big, uh, was a big thing for, uh- So, signage was a big thing for the planning commission. And we think it's probably one of the most effective, especially for notifying folks in the area who frequently walk by the site. So, we do signage for larger applications, but we are still working on getting that rolled out for smaller applications like subdivisions. I think in this case, it worked out well because we did get a couple of public comments, I think, from folks who had seen the sign as opposed to the letter.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Ms. Teetz was next.
Yeah, I was. I kind of wanted to comment along the same lines as Mr. Stevens because I think in the letter she had said something about this was not like a by right thing, but actually a subdivision kind of is. It's, you know, even though the planning commission votes on it, it's a more administrative vote than a lot of our votes where we really just have to say, is this subdivision legal? Does it meet the requirements in terms of the size of the lot and the frontage on the street? And if it does, there's really not much we can do in that area. The other thing is there was a lot of concern about runoff and flooding in that area. And I guess the only thing good I can say about it, because I drove over there recently, is that these lots are at the bottom kind of of a slope coming down from Greenway Downs. So, any, you know, hopefully, they deal well with the water on those sites and put in all the requirements that they will have to deal with water. But if there was any kind of water issue, it's probably going to keep heading downhill to Trips Run itself through the school playground. So, from that point, at least it's not going to aggravate any of the neighbors that are up the slope from them that are having flooding problems currently. But another thing is there were some concerns about the sidewalk, that maybe they don't need it. But I think we all know, like, the number one request that we get from a lot of neighborhoods is either neighborhood comment of traffic or sidewalks. And so, I think that if we can get a sidewalk in an area, in a school area, even if it's just a piece of one, we really should be trying to do that. You know, it doesn't make sense not to put a sidewalk in there if we can get one as part of the subdivision. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Teetz. Ms. Weiss, you were next.
Yes, I actually had a procedural question on the public comment. This is a public hearing, and the commenter is not able to share her comments during the meeting live, and the comments came in at a time where they weren't able to be posted. Is there a way that staff can make the comments public or to at least summarize the key points? Ms. Teetz has just summarized some of the points, but since this neighbor took the time to submit the comment, I think it'll be good and effective if we can find a way to either share the comments or at least highlight the key points that were made in them.
Ms. Weiss, can you clarify how that comment was sent in?
The comment? Well, let's see. Mr. Holleran sent us a letter, a Word document as an attachment and email today.
Okay, was that the one that I sent earlier today?
Yeah. We have received a second one as well. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, is there a second one too? Okay.
Yeah.
And I would agree with Ms. Weiss. I think in the past, Emily has actually summarized some of these emails or even read them verbatim.
Right. And I think we should. I was going to actually... Well, I was going to get to, you know, whether we had any other public comments, you know, or, you know, even testimony, but, yeah, we should do that because, you know, it is a public hearing, and these are folks who might have come in person if they were allowed to do that in a different forum. So, I mean, do we... Where's the second? I don't know if I got this. Did I get the second one? Was that sent... When was that sent?
I sent that after hours today. It might have been right before the meeting.
Oh, I did. One was sent in the morning, and one was sent later in the day.
Yeah, there was one that we received after the typical comment deadline, but I still wanted to make sure that the planning commissioners got it.
Okay. Is that the one by Ms. Buffington? Was it Ms. Buffington?
We have one from Ms. Buffington and one from Ms. Veal. Sorry if I'm pronouncing names incorrectly.
I got the one from Ms. Veal. Well, we should.
I can read that one if you'd like.
We should. Although, if they were here, again, they're only permitted... Can you read it in... What, do we usually give people three minutes?
I can read this in three minutes.
Okay, then why don't we do that? Then why don't we address the public comment at this time?
Sure. So, this is from Jennifer Veal. She's at 207 West Cameron Road. The comment reads, "Dear Mr. Holleran, I do not agree with the proposed project for the following reasons. Subdividing the lot and building another house on the street will further exacerbate traffic and parking congestion on the street. Furthermore, a proposed sidewalk to nowhere in front of the house does not make sense in front of an elementary school, and it could become a safety issue. At the end of the street where Seton Lane and West Cameron intersect, also frequently a casualty to storms in the neighborhood by flooding. Additionally, residents on West Cameron are already dealing with a higher water table and threat of basement flooding. Lastly, can we measure the impact of removing two large redwoods on the already high water table? Kindly, Ms. Veal."
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holleran. And the other letter from Ms. Buffington, was that one posted so that the public could read that or no? Was that also... That was just emailed to us? So, otherwise, we probably need to summarize. That one's longer, but we probably need to summarize that one as well.
Okay, I'm going to pull that up here.
You can probably read that one in three minutes, verbatim, I would guess.
Yeah, you go ahead and try. I mean, it's longer, but, you know, given the circumstances we're forced to operate in, I mean, we should probably just read it. I mean, if we had 20 letters, it'd be a different story, but if it's only this one, we'll go ahead and read it into the record verbatim.
Sure. So, "To the Chair and members of the Falls Church Planning Commission City Staff, a public comment regarding 222 West Greenway Boulevard and 221 West Cameron Road, Lot Line Adjustment and Subdivision. My name is Beth Buffington, and I live at 212 West Cameron Road, Falls Church, Virginia, 22046. I am a registered architect and have practiced over 35 years in the Washington DC area. My husband Ron Anzalone is Chairman of the Historical Commission in the city of Falls Church. We have lived at our current address for 33 years. Our property is adjacent to Trips Run and is now considered to be in the 100-year floodplain. I have several serious concerns about the proposed lot line adjustment and redevelopment of the property. These lots are located in a very sensitive location in terms of flooding, pedestrian circulation, and traffic circulation. Starting with flooding and stormwater, the Trips Run water shed is a sensitive area for development. There is already significant flooding at the Cameron, Seton, and Sharrow intersection as all the water uphill on Cameron, Greenway, and West George Mason Drive is inevitably funneled down to Trips Run at a low point in this area. The houses on Sharrow Avenue and Cameron Road at this intersection regularly flood. The Trips Run floodplain is not static. Every time FEMA reruns the calculation, we have less and less permeable area and more development, and it is inevitable that the 100-year flood will expand and more and more homes will be at risk. When we bought our property on Cameron Road, none of it was in the 100-year floodplain. Now, it almost all is. As for pedestrian circulation, the school and the adjustment, the adjacent bike path are huge generators of pedestrian traffic at all times of the day and all days of the week. The school is a mecca for dog walkers, fitness enthusiasts, sports groups, bikers, skateboarders, and children of all sizes and descriptions. It is a wonderful part of the Falls Church community. Pedestrian traffic in this area works because there is only one path and one crosswalk from Cameron Road to the school. This redevelopment and the addition of another sidewalk, which links to nothing but Greenway Road, would confuse walkers and create additional jaywalking along Seton Lane. Without a doubt, with a number of children and adults using this crossing, someone will be hurt. Vehicular circulation. The subject lots are at an intersection of Cameron Road, Seton Lane, and Sharrow Drive. There is a three-way stop at this intersection. It is always busy. The TJ Elementary, to be renamed Oak Street Elementary, is directly across the street, and there are lines of cars, morning and evening, for drop-off and pickup of students. Both Cameron Road and Sharrow Avenue are cut-through streets connecting Broad Street and Lee Highway and avoiding the intersection of those two roads in downtown Falls Church. There is no... Or, I'm sorry, there is traffic to and from the school and adjacent playing fields. Teachers, parents, and members of the public often visit the site for events and games. The school is a polling place. This redevelopment would further confuse the traffic at this complicated intersection and reduce vehicular safety. As a summary, this is not a landowner by right issue and will allow another house, which significantly increases density at this critical intersection. In my personal and professional opinion, it would be irresponsible of the city to allow this subdivision and lot line adjustment, which will increase storm runoff at a sensitive location. It'll complicate pedestrian circulation at a complicated intersection used by all of the city's elementary schoolchildren, and it will complicate vehicular circulation at a busy and complex intersection. And that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Holleran. So, all right, so that's the public comment. I guess, I know, I guess the applicant kind of said they had nothing else to add, but I would say I'll give either the applicant or Ms. Issuewood the opportunity to either make a comment or, you know, respond to the public comment we received if they'd like.
Sure, I can speak to it. So, you know, I guess I did want to just kind of make the note. I know there were concerns about the density at this corner here, and without the subdivision, you know, this lot, the existing lot, could be developed as a two-family dwelling. So, I did want to kind of just make that note because if there is a concern about density and, you know, talking about by right development, that is, I guess, in my opinion, the same density to be able to create a two-family dwelling. And then, in terms of the curb cuts that we've added, one of the houses will front on Greenway. So, the existing curb cut for the house is already on Seton Lane, and so, we're going to maintain one curb cut along that street. I think that was one of the other concerns. And for stormwater management, you know, with any redevelopment, we're going to have to meet the requirements for that, so that'll come with the plan of development.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Issuewood. I see Mr. Puentez has his hand up, and I don't think he's spoken yet, so... Mr. Puentez?
No, that was before. Apologies.
All right. Ms. Comott's hand is up.
Yeah, I just, I had a question about the sidewalk, staff's plans for the sidewalk. I'm in support of having that sidewalk there. People often walk in the street on Seton Lane, on that side of the street, so I think it will make those people safer. But I'm curious how you're going to connect it. It is, it will sort of end. Do you know, is there an easement for the neighboring lot, 633A? How far will the sidewalk come, kind of around the corner? Is it possible to connect it to either, I guess, the, I don't know what side it is, the opposite side of Seton Lane or to the opposite side of West Cameron?
Mr. Fuller, you had your hand up. Do you want to address that?
In terms of the existing easements, I'll let Jeff address that one. But in terms of the sidewalk, yeah, you know, there would be a sidewalk there, and then there would be a gap beyond it. And so, we've already approached Public Works and inquired with them as to potentially filling that gap in the future. So, we've started that discussion. You know, the fact that we pick up pieces with subdivisions, eventually, you know, we want to fill those in. In this case, this one, you know, lends to something more immediate. So, we've started that conversation.
Okay, so no immediate plans for how it might connect by ramps? I know that can be a kind of complicated thing with the ADA requirements. But I guess I would just encourage you to figure out what... Ensure that it is not a sidewalk to nowhere, that it does connect to the neighboring sidewalks, and if there's a way to kind of also make that intersection safer. It is a busy intersection. There are a lot of people crossing there. I think that would be an added benefit to this development.
Yes, we'll be pursuing that, and like I said, we've initiated that already. Thank you.
Terrific.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fuller. Let's see, any other questions from commissioners on the subdivision? Okay, I mean, I would just add that, you know, as far as responding to the public comment, I think, I agree with you, Ms. Issuewood, as far as, for the sense of adding a house that wouldn't otherwise be added, I agree that that's not exactly the case. A unit, right, the two-family house would generate same amount of traffic. It would cover relatively similar amount of area as far as stormwater. And so, in this sense, this applicant was in the, I guess you could say, fortuitous circumstance that lot 633A had room to... Had land to give, so to speak, whatever the price was, they had land that they were able to spare and not make their lot non-conforming in order to provide the ability to have two conforming lots for a single-family detached here. So, in that sense, it is essentially a, you know, a by rights subdivision. It's not dramatically changing the character, you know, along this section. As Ms. Teetz noted, it does flow downhill here. Doesn't mean stormwater isn't important because, you know, eventually the Trips Run, you know, affects many other people in the city and beyond. But as far as immediate neighbors feeling the effects of this project from a stormwater perspective, that should not be the case here as in some other applications. And we're getting a sidewalk out of it across from the only elementary school within City Limits. So, that's a good thing. Actually, the only school with... Well, that's not true anymore, but the only elementary school within City Limits. So, all those things are positive. Let's see, Mr. Holleran's, only other question I had, maybe I'm like, maybe I just, like last year, was such a blur, but when you mentioned in the beginning of your proposed motion that this area is now within the Greenway Downs Overlay District, did that get approved? I mean, I know we talked about it. We had a work session on it. You know, I know, like, right before COVID hit, we had... I know we had a work session on it. Did that actually come to pass, but from council?
I was actually hoping that Gary could fill us in on that. That was not my...
Okay, because that was added to the motion. If it's not actually...
Yeah.
The overlay district doesn't exist, then we probably shouldn't mention it in that sense.
Yeah, no, I think you were just talking about that the, there's a subdivision designation for Greenway Downs there. I think that's what you're referring to, that the... I know there's been discussion of changing zoning and having an overlay, but that hasn't occurred at this point.
Okay, well, the draft motion for Mr. Holleran identifies the property as being within the Greenway Downs overlay, but there is no...
That was a proposed overlay, yes.
Right.
It might just need to be reworded to...
Okay. Yeah, we just want to be careful about that.
Sure.
Because we talked about, well, Ms. Teetz probably remembers better than anyone else. The overlay, Reword Downs overlay has been a dream maybe or an idea for a long time, but it's not quite a reality yet.
Well, I don't think it's going to happen now. That's kind of the story we got back, was that people have just learned to work around the zoning problems, right?
Yeah, for better or for worse, although I don't, you know, I still think there's merit in that idea, but that's probably discussion for another day.
I agree.
Yeah. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, we're just to take out the word overlay.
I think that, yeah, for our purposes tonight, yes, we just want to be accurate, and we should just... It's certainly within Greenway Downs, but not... But zoning is the zoning it's always been. So, right, that was the only clarification I had.
Okay, sorry about that, folks.
No problem. There's just a lot of history with that idea. All right. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I'm happy to go ahead and make a motion if we want to move this along.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Whereas the proposed subdivision at 222 West Greenway Boulevard has been reviewed and meets the requirements of the city's subdivision and zoning ordinances with the approved lot line adjustments with 221 West Cameron Road. And whereas the proposed subdivision lies within the Greenway Downs District, Section 5, and is consistent with the permitted uses and regulations of that area, I move that the planning commission... I move that the planning commission grant preliminary and final plat approval of subdivision application number 2021-0184 to subdivide 222 West Greenway Boulevard, RPC number 52-402-036, into the two proposed parcels with the following conditions. One, the proposed parcels are addressed as 222 West Greenway Boulevard and 803 Seaton Lane from west to east as recommended by the city's building official. And two, that the subdivision be titled "The Greenway Downs, Section 5." And three, that the orientation of houses shall be shown on final plat for all new lots. And four, that the owner must sign and notarize final plat. And five, that the action be labeled under the notes section of the final plat, "222 West Greenway Boulevard Subdivision Lot Line Adjustment" and "221 West Cameron Road Lot Line Adjustment." And six, that the easement for public sidewalk and utility requires a deed of recordation from the grantor to be recorded at the time of subdivision recordation. And seven, that the revised plat submitted by the applicant, which includes sidewalk and necessary easements as shown in the sidewalk exhibit attached to this staff report, be reviewed and accepted administratively by staff prior to recording to the subdivision.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Puente is, hold on a second.
Thank you, Mr. Puente. Any discussion on the motion? I might just say, just, when we talk about, it's not, it's really not important, but in the, in the whereas, Greenway Downs District, again, I don't know if we should even use the word district. I don't think we have a Greenway Downs District. We have a neighborhood subdivision, but that's probably, I'd, I'd rather just strike that altogether, just not to confuse people as to what Greenway Downs is and is not. So, as long as Mr. Stevens and Mr. Puente are okay with that, everything else sounds good to me.
Yeah, that's fine.
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll just say it lies within Greenway Downs. Okay, so, any other discussion? If not, we'll get a roll call vote, Mr. Holland, please.
Okay, Ms. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss? Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Puente?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Krasner?
Yes. Okay, great, that subdivision is approved. Okay, moving right along. Hopefully that's the heavy lift of the night, but we'll see, we'll see how it goes. The next item up is the public information session on the W O N D Park and Trail crossings. We've heard this before in earlier, in some more conceptual iterations. I believe we're at like, we're at the 90% level, so we're pretty far along. Let's see, who from staff is gonna give us a, a very succinct staff report on this?
All right. So in terms of the, this item, it's a informational item for the, the commission to, you know, take a look at, provide any feedback to staff. As was mentioned, these are 90% plans. And, you know, these project goals were for the trail crossing projects to improve the safety for pedestrians and bicyclists using the trail. And it would also reinforce the prominence of the W O N D Trail. And the project is, it's one that's significant in that there's a lot of users traveling through the city. And this would lead to further improvements along these lines, you know, since, over the years, the, the uses expanded. So the project scope would improve the street crossings in four locations in Falls Church. And those crossings are located on Little Falls Street, Great Falls Street, North Oak Street, and North Spring Street. Improvements would include a mixture of narrowing the street sections, the median islands, stamped concrete, and lighting. There's also a companion project to reconstruct the existing trail with separate pedestrian and bicycle paths that's under construction by Nova Parks with a grant from the MBTA. The dual-pass project alignment, which runs from Little Falls to Northwest Street in the city. City staff and Nova Parks, they're consultants that work closely to coordinate the design on both those projects. Then the comprehensive plan guidance, you know, talks about all modes based on the 2014 adopted, and great, civic great streets, and enhancing the W O N D Trail. Master Plan Guidance supports all of that. So, at this point, you know, what the vehicle trail crossings of the, of the W O N D Park, or, you know, the, the trail itself is achieving the goal of the comprehensive plan for narrowing street sections, race crossings, traffic control, lighting, trail safety achieved through the, these design elements of horizontal design, vertical design, signing. So there's graphics that indicate all those improvements, and which would be comprehensively done in those locations. So, there's also some concurrent investments in those projects are already active in that quarter. So the staff analysis of the 90% plans is a modified version of the crossings described in the W O N D Park Master Plan. And then there's a table that summarizes those differences, as well as the design elements that, that became part of the final engineered plan. So, you know, those plans are nearing completion, and so we just wanted to provide this opportunity for the planning commission to weigh in on any aspects or any final thoughts regarding this project. But we're very happy that, that this is, you know, wrapping up. And so we wanted to present this to you as an informational item. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Any questions? Ms. Coman?
Hi, I'm so excited to see this come into reality. These are sorely needed at the intersections for the W O N D Trail. I just have a couple of questions. I just want to confirm that these crossings are raised. Is that correct? Because looking at, I was, I was a little confused about it, and I, I may just not be well versed in reading these plans.
My understanding is they're, they're all raised crossings. I'm not the project manager on this. Let's see, let's drop in on those plans. But in terms of the staff report, it describes them as raised.
Okay. My other, my other comment, and I, since you're in there, if you go to page, um, let's see. Page eight?
Okay.
Uh, perhaps the next page? Yes. So the median that's depicted there, it, it looks like those, I'm not sure what that material is. It looks like stone. Is that correct? Sort of on either side? I'd really love to see, I mean, because this is the park, I know, I know that visibility can be an issue, but I'd really love to see some, like, low-growing plants there instead of stone? Yes. So if that could be considered, and in a few other areas, it looks like we're adding a lot of concrete, and if there are opportunities to add less concrete and add more green things that are alive and growing, and kind of contribute to the feeling of it being a park, that will not hinder, you know, visibility. I know that might be a concern. I would, I would love to have that explored, if possible. Those are my two comments.
Okay, yeah, we can make that note.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Weiss?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the issue of raised versus flat crossings. My interpretation of the staff report is that these are in fact flat crossing. On page or line 80, there's a table in the staff report says "as engineered, flat crossing at grade with street." Is that the correct interpretation, that these are flat crossings?
There we go, design element, raised crossing at grade with park.
It's like it was changed, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, it looks like it was changed. Yep. Concern about stormwater flows and the cost of installing additional stormwater infrastructure. Okay, so it looks like, you know, originally it was proposed as that. So, is that something that you'd like to comment on further? I, I mean, I apologize, I, I haven't worked on this project at all, so I'm not completely up on it.
I would prefer the crossings be raised, if possible. I think the original intention of these W O N D crossings were for, for drivers to feel like they were traversing through a park, rather than, you know, the, the, the opposite. It, it may be, it may be too late at this point, but I would support raised crossings, if they're feasible.
All right. Is that the general consensus of the planning commission?
Well, I would just add, this is Tim. I mean, the explanation is concern with stormwater flows, but we don't have an engineer here who can kind of tell us what those issues are. But usually those crossings are slightly higher than the, than the immediate street areas around them. After all, it used to be a railroad. So, you know, at first blush, it doesn't make sense, but like I say, that it could be the straightforward explanation that somebody could provide. But yeah, lacking that understanding, I would agree that anything that helps to slow down cars and, and the, the, that they're impeding on something which a raised track would do, would be preferred.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll pursue that with the project planner and the consultant. And then we can report back in the director's report at a future meeting here.
All right, I mean, I mean, it sounds like, you know, we're at 90%, and I guess, you know, things get value engineered out, unfortunately. But some of the stuff, right, it's just not clear to me, you know, if, like, we're saying the raised crosswalks were a stormwater concern. I mean, it seems unusual that, that it might be, it seems that that difference would make, would be significant, especially considering that with the stormwater upgrades that are going on with the dualizing of the trail right now. You know, I mean, I can't imagine that whatever change in grade or additional runoff, it's not additional runoff, I suppose, it's all impervious, but the, whatever change in grade is going on would go on because of the raised crosswalk, couldn't somehow be dealt with, with all the, you know, new infrastructure that's going in to deal with the extra pavement for the new trail. So that, to me, seems strange. I don't know, I know that's a Nova Parks project, you know, and I don't know, again, with the budgets and how we're, you know, how this is working, you know, what, what the relationship is, you know, as far as that goes, but it would seem there would be opportunities to explore that if that hadn't been done already. So perhaps Ms. Odenino, whoever's the project manager, has a very good and reasonable answer to that. But that does seem strange to me. The other comment I might make too is, you know, I see they're showing stamped concrete instead of brick pavers, you know, as the, you know, in the, in the crossings, you know, the brick pavers were designed stamped. Concrete is cheaper, but, you know, and stamped concrete, not even so much from an aesthetic standpoint that I have a concern, but sometimes stamped concrete can actually be a little slippery. You know, and if so, just for both, for people, bikes and cars. I mean, there are times where I just know stamped concrete, depending on how it's done, is, can be a little slippery. And perhaps there were techniques that, you know, would make it perfectly suitable, but, and people, maybe you're better versed in it than I, maybe, you know, would say, what are you talking about? It's gonna be fine, but, but I, I know from experience that, that stamped concrete has a higher or a lower, what do they call it, coefficient of friction, it's just, it's more slippery. So, that's another question, as far as, you know, from a safety perspective, is it less safe to have the concrete versus the papers?
Okay.
That was, that was really my only, only concern, other than what was already mentioned. All right, anybody else? And we're gonna try to keep on moving here, because somehow the, the night's getting away from us. We still have a few more things to address. So if there are any other comments from folks on this, it is at the 90% level, so I think we need, we do need to keep our comments targeted, and it sounds like we have. So if not, if there are no other further comments on that, this is, this is not a public hearing, right? This is just a public information session.
Yeah, this was just an informational session for you. And so what I'll do is I'll, I'll write up these comments, and then Paul will pass them on, and then we'll respond at a future meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fuller. That sounds, that sounds like a plan. All right, so moving right along, since we want to keep on trucking here. Next item up is the approval of March 21st minutes. Does anyone have any corrections, changes, or can, not unless for a motion to approve the minutes from March 21st?
I believe they're actually April 21st. I think they're labeled in the link, but the...
The agenda.
Yeah.
I was wondering about that. All right, sorry, my, my bad. April 21st, which was not all that long ago. And that was a long night. Any comments on those minutes from anybody?
Chair, movie, move we approve the minutes of April 21st?
My second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, but Ms. Teetz, discussion if not, roll call vote.
Okay, Ms. Weiss? Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Puente?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes. Okay, great, minutes are approved. We're up to, up to speed on that. All right, number seven informational items. We have planning commissioners' reports and correspondence, so starting with planning commissioners' reports. I believe Mr. Puente's, uh, wanted this item added, so maybe I'll, I'll throw it over to Mr. Puente. Is that correct?
Oh, just, there was a, um, a briefing this afternoon by the Coalition for Smarter Growth about the redevelopment of the, proposed redevelopment by UIA of the West Falls Church site. A couple of other commissioners were there. Just, it was an information session, more advocacy than, than anything else, and they took questions.
That's right, that's right, yeah, I did, I did hear about that, but thank you for forwarding that along. I'm sure for those of you who attended, I'm sure it was interesting to hear.
Yeah, this is Tim. It was, it was a good session, from the standpoint that Evan Goldman talked quite a bit, not so much about the Falls Church site, which we're presumably familiar with, but the other two sites. And it's recorded, so anybody who might want to go back could probably go to the Coalition for Smarter Growth website and, and have, have access to the recording.
That's great, that was my next question. Those of us who are not able to watch it, watch it, so, good, excellent. Any other planning commissioner reports? Okay, not hearing any. So we'll keep on moving. There's a number of correspondence items, Mr. Fuller. I mean, I've read them, and I don't know if we need to really discuss each one point by point, unless folks have specific questions. I mean, the way I view correspondence items are that they're kind of there for our information. We don't need to get into a long discussion about them, unless people like to, or have a particular thing they want to highlight. So, and that includes staff, so the, the items are there. Any other correspondence items that folks want to discuss? Otherwise, we'll file them, otherwise, we'll file them away as correspondence. All right. So with that, we'll move to director's report. And, Mr. Fuller, I guess that's you tonight.
Yes. I'll start off with, you know, upcoming on our planning commission agenda. So at the next meeting on the 19th, the, well, the speaker series with Eileen with, with Mr. Arlington County, we're discussing stormwater environmental planning. That's based on a Stormwater Task Force is invited. Second item is the West Falls Church lot line adjustment regarding... Second item is the West Falls Church, uh, lot line adjustment, uh, regarding the, uh, that project and the school property and the developer property and, uh, and the, uh, lot line adjustment that needs to occur on that. And then, uh, there'll be a council work plan and equity action item, and then Fairfax County comprehensive plan, uh, update onto the work, uh, work session on that. So anyway, so we'll have those four items, so we'll have another, um, fairly full agenda. In terms of the director's report itself, um, you were, you were given several items. The Surface Transportation Act, the city of Falls Church has a request um, through Congressman Byer, um, and the twenty twenty one surface funding, uh, authorizing the Senate Transportation Infrastructure Appropriations Committee. Cities requested, uh, just under, um, seven million dollars in funds for citywide multimodal transportation infrastructure improvements, and if those are awarded, the funds will be used to enhance, uh, those types of projects in our transportation network throughout the city. Secondly, the, uh, Smart Cities, um, test bed recently passed, uh, Virginia State Budget included a large award for a joint effort with the city and Virginia Tech, um, to develop a test bed for Smart Cities technologies. Cities requested an additional, uh, four million for federal surface transportation funds for a smart city, um, connected transportation infrastructure test bed and so forth. This is a pilot project the city has partnered with Virginia Tech on, um, to perform. So anyway, uh, that'll, it'll test technologies such as adaptive lighting, smart parking, single timing, autonomous vehicles, and connecting vehicles, including, um, transit, um, and, and other, um, types of efficiency, um, types of, uh, objectives. Also, the MBTC has written a letter of support with requests due to the project's alignment with the envisioned route for the Route Seven Bus Rapid Transit, BRT project. So those were just some informational items for you, um, and that concludes the director's report. Were there any questions on any of those items?
Thank you, Mr. Fuller, any questions, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, just real quick on the, uh, uh, next meeting that we have with, you mentioned something about the comprehensive plan at Fairfax County, is that just with respect to the Brad Center and the Womata, Womata site, or is that something else?
No, that's, that's for that West, West Falls Church area site, yes.
Okay, so that's that T, so-called TSA process that the county is going through.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Teets?
Yes, um, I just want to point out in the correspondence, we actually had two neighbors from citizens. Um, one was, um, from neighbors near the Founder's Road Phase Two, like the Rite Aid site. Um, you know, asking for more information about what's gonna happen there, and I just wanted to point that out because it was public, it was a public letter sent to us, and, and that, they seemed, you know, they're, they're good with the development, but they're concerned that, like, the anchor might be seven eleven, and wondered if we could get more there. So just wanted to point that out, that we had gotten that. Nice slow scrolling, thank you. But anyway, so I guess, like, as, as we're looking at this project, we should remember some of these questions that are coming from the neighbors.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've put those in a file, so the next um, public meeting, either probably a work session that you'll have on that item, uh, will include those in, in that round, so they won't, you know, so in other words, um, since we haven't had an action item before you on it, we'll, we'll continue to include those in the next staff report related to it.
Yeah, perfect, yeah, and then the other letter that came up was from someone talking about the Virginia Tech site. Um, I'm not sure if staff can answer the questions they had in there, but they were saying that they understood that the contract for Virginia Tech, if, you know, if they buy the land from us, precludes them from doing commercial residential uses, I don't know if staff knows the answer to those.
Yeah, those are questions that we've, uh, passed on, because, uh, those are really not, um, for the planners, it's more of a, you know, contractual side of things, um, that, you know, we didn't, we didn't, we don't have all those documents, we're not able to answer that, so we passed it on.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure something was done with that, because I thought that was interesting. And the last thing, correspondence, I'm sorry, I'm really hot on correspondence today. Um, I saw that the staff sent a letter to, um, the Fairfax County Department of Transportation about the Seven Corners Ring Road, and so, I know, we've been hearing about this maybe seven or eight years, something like that, I mean, it's been coming, they, but, and every time it comes back around, we, we say that we don't want to be part of the ring, because at one point, they wanted to use Roosevelt and Roosevelt as part of their ring, and they wanted to involve Hillwood. Um, obviously, these areas of the city next to Seven Corners that would be part of this ring are all residential, so anyway, I thought that was interesting, and I was just wondering, is, was this letter, um, was this letter triggered by something, did Fairfax County send some information to us, did they have some kind of event that brought it back up?
I think it was, yeah, it was some, uh, routine notice where they, uh, notified the adjacent jurisdiction. If I recall others' conversation on it, I haven't been directly involved, but I recall something along those lines.
I believe this, I believe this past, like, winter or early spring, um, there was some additional, like, public outreach that the county was doing on the Seven Corners Ring Road project, and I think that's where it's coming from, and it, uh, it has been in, you know, it's been, it's been studied now for, yeah, you know, a number of years, but I believe they were doing some outreach more recently, and I believe that's why Paul, you know, drafted that letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, because it's, it's, as someone who lives on that side of the city, it was, it was very concerning at the very beginning when they first were trying to run this thing through residential neighborhoods, including in my, you know, right between the cemetery and a, and a neighborhood at one point, but, um, okay, so, just, you know, I'm just curious, I guess this, this is something we're really gonna have to keep watching, um, because it could really affect a lot of our, um, citizens on that side of town.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I believe they had, they definitely had some public meetings back in, like, February or March, you know, the county had some virtual meetings they hosted, so maybe some more information we can get on that, as far as where, where it's going.
Oh, I guess there was one other letter too, the ESC sent us something, um, about the, um, the city center special exception application, so I assume that that'll come up when we are looking at that project again.
Right, I think they were, some of those folks were, they're, you know, some of those folks had representatives at that meeting as well as
Right.
Founder's Row, uh, and so, right, so they were kind of putting it into writing, which is, which is good. Okay.
For me.
Great, so that's that, we had the director's report. There are no further comments on the director's report, we'll, we'll jump into our work session for the evening, which is the council's work plan and the, and, uh, on equity specifically. Um, and I believe, I guess staff is gonna give us a presentation, is it also you, Mr. Fuller?
Um, let me pull that item up, um, that one. Let's see. Alright. Alright, so on this item, I'm not, um, let's see, can you scroll down a little bit on that, um, thanks, Jeff, alright, right there, perfect. Let's see, so the city council, um, as part of their work plan, is, is conducting a review, um, through this month, and so the, the following from the planning commission's discussion as part of the year's annual advance, staff recommended that planning commission identify ways to increase social equity through the performance of, you know, city charter, state city codes. This in generally includes reviewing the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance review, development applications, and the CIP program. And so the request is to review and discuss these duties and roles in general, to ensure that the city is equally serving the needs of all. So this review is a directive of the city council, as they work to better integrate uh, in terms of, uh, principle of equity throughout the services provided by the city. So in terms of councils authorize, uh, groups to make recommendations on policy changes, and so this is before you, you know, to make some preliminary comments on it. So, I'll go ahead and open it up, um, some of the topic areas are outlined, um, starting in line thirty-four, regard to housing, urban design, public investments. Um, obviously, housing has been a, um, a, a topic of discussion with a lot of our development projects of late, and, and just, um, providing affordable housing in, in the region and locally. Uh, then urban design, um, and public investment, uh, in, in these, um, types of improvements, so um, with that, I, I'll just open up to the commission, um, and for any, uh, general comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller, right, we think, and I think we discussed this, at least introduced the idea a few weeks ago, I forgot which meeting it was at. I know Ms. Weiss, I think, reminded staff that this was something that the council had asked all boards and commissions to, to address, um, by, you know, I think the end of the spring, and so, uh, we needed to, to, to tackle that. Um, and I did talk to Mr. Stoddard about this topic, um, I also, just for folks, just for informational purposes, I sent around, you know, the, the, a webinar that was offered recently, and Mr. Stoddard attached some stuff from the American Planning Association. Um, I mean, not to to our horns as city planners, but, you know, I would say that, you know, all boards and commissions, I'm sure, think about equity, but planners, you know, I think, especially in recent years, have, I think, have done a fairly good job of, of looking at that. You know, and, and for, for us, I mean, when I talked to Paul, and we were kind of brainstorming about this topic, I mean, to some way, in some ways, you know, I feel like, you know, for us to be able to include, I mean, we, we are, we already, I think, at least in a, in a indirect way, think about equity and, and everything we do, uh, just based on the, the issues we, you know, we, we tackle and, uh, some of the comments we raise, everything from affordable housing to transit, uh, to, you know, multimodal transportation, I mean, there's a host of things we look at. Uh, but, you know, for me, I felt like, you know, the one way that we could begin to, and I'll just throw this out there as, as an idea, just to get the conversation started, you know, was, you know, having, uh, an equity sort of discussion added, um, to, or an equity subsection of any time we're, you know, we're updating any part of the comp plan, um, you know, any, any, any section or topic area, or, or, um, uh, to, to include a section that specifically hits on, on, on the equity, uh, topic, you know, has, is this plan addressing the city's goals with that, in, with, with respect to that, so, you know, as far as implementation, in a way, we as the planning commission can, can have an impact and make sure we're actually addressing this in our work, um, not just in general, I think, you know, incorporating it formally into our uh, planning documents, you know, it was an idea I had that, that, you know, we could do to try, to try to tackle that, but that was just just something that, that I thought about, um, you know, talking with Mr. Stoddard. Um, so anyhow, with that, uh, I see Ms. Weiss has put her hand up.
Um, yeah, thanks, I think, um, that's a great idea. Um, I have a, a couple thoughts on this, one is just kind of starting with who we are and our demographics as a city. We are very white, I think, over eighty percent, if I recall correctly. We're pretty high income, extremely high income, I would say. And I think, I, I can't scientifically state this, but I would say a number of members of boards and commissions, you know, come from this privileged community. So I think there is something about who we are as a city and who we are potentially as individual planning commission member, that means that we probably have a lot of just education and work to do to understand these, these issues better. Particularly in the context of, um, you know, it's, 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 it's just, it's, it's all well and good to support equity, but then when it comes to actually making hard decisions, that's when people tend to want to hoard their privileges and, you know, make suggestions for other people to improve equity elsewhere, but not here. Nivism, I guess, is the more accurate way of saying that, so I'd like to propose that there be some sort of education or engagement discussion at the planning commission about really what equity means on a more ongoing basis. Um, uh, yeah, a speaker series might be one potential idea, I do note that in the correspondence, there were two presentations on, uh, housing policy and segregation. I mean, those, those would be, I think, one was by McGuire Woods and somebody from George Mason University, you know, let's, let's have them come in and talk to us, there's probably other um, speakers who would be useful for us to hear as well. Um, another library board has taken on this twenty-one day racial justice course, that might be something, and there might be other resources that we could share, you know, individually as planning commission members. I don't know anything about the program, I haven't looked it up, so I can't tell you about it or propose it, so that's just a little idea. Um, so one, education, thinking about who we are. Two, um, Mr. Krasner, I like your idea of, uh, adding an equity section to every comp plan, um, discussion. I would actually suggest that we extend that further and um, add that to every action we need to take, just ask the question, what are, what is the impact on equity, or how is equity affected by this decision that we're making? And I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Weiss, now those are all, all very good points. Does any, well, and actually, you know, just to, just to respond to that too, I mean, I agree as far as, you know, the makeup of boards and commissions, which is obviously something that city council, that's maybe more in their wheelhouse, but to, you know, just like on every, you know, the, the, to the extent, you know, we, you know, we do have different groups within the city, you know, we want the boards and commissions to, you know, membership, to reflect, um, you know, the diversity that we do have, it may not be the most, um, diverse, uh, jurisdiction in the region, but you know, we do have probably more diversity than maybe the memberships of the boards and commissions, you know, um, represent, and there are probably various reasons for that. I don't think any of them are nefarious, but, um, I think that that's something that's, you know, so as far as, you know, we have, we have a vacancy on the commission right now. Um, and so to the extent, you know, we can, again, you know, there's, there's, maybe for city council, but if we as members, if we know people that, uh, might provide a different perspective, uh, encourage them to, you know, maybe, you know, be, get involved, you know, there may be reasons why some groups maybe have been less involved historically, um, you know, with certain things like that, so, uh, yeah, that's a very good point. Anybody else have any, any, uh, comments they'd like to make on this, on this topic, about how we can better, uh, include equity in, in our work? That was kind of a, it's kind of a heady topic for almost ten o'clock at night on a, on a Wednesday, but, um, I mean, one thing I think also, you know, obviously, you know, I mean, I mean, I mean, Ms. Weiss is correct, and I just, you know, it does go beyond the comp plan, I mean, I think there are, you know, when, anytime we're approving, you know, developments to the, you know, anytime we're looking at issues related to zoning, I mean, there's, there's, that's been a topic that you know, obviously has been very high profile, you know, zoning is not usually a high profile topic, you know, but somehow it found its way into the last election, um, and, you know, there certainly are, obviously, there's a very, you know, zoning itself has a, has a history, um, it wasn't always equitable, um, and to the extent, you know, our city's zoning, as we continue to look at it and refine it, um, as a tool for, you know, improving that, improving equity, um, and something that, you know, we do need to be mindful of. Ms. Comont?
I just want to second, um, Ms. Weiss's great suggestions and echo her comments about how, uh, I think we all will have some blind spots, definitely, uh, when it comes to equity, um, issues, not having, um, experienced many of the challenges and, um, uh, that, uh, people of different backgrounds might have experienced. have experienced. And I just want to say, I, I think that racial equity is really critically important to the city. And I also want us to think really carefully about economic diversity in the city, which I think we are losing, looking at the demographics chapter. It looks like more, about three quarters or more of city residents are earning 100% or more of the area median income. But in the future, we actually will, there's some small increases projected for, you know, lower income bands. And so how can we welcome those people to the city? What can we do? I think many of us on this commission probably agree that a lot of it comes back to housing and providing affordable housing in Falls Church City. And looking again at the, the implementation, no, sorry, not the implementation plan, but the housing capacity analysis through 2045, there are some very specific staff recommendations for changes, concrete changes that we can make to plan for additional housing capacity in the future in Falls Church. And I think those are difficult conversations because many of them involve change and adding more residents and, but I think there are conversations that we are going to need to have now if we want to be able to welcome more and different kinds of residents to the city in the future.
Yeah, absolutely, Ms. Koma. Yeah, I mean, affordable housing in some ways is the driver to help, you know, maintain what diversity we have and to encourage more, and not just racial, but socioeconomic, which is, you know, just as important, you know, as far as, as far as that goes. And I agree. And obviously, we certainly, we, you know, the affordable housing sort of, you know, fight, if you will, is something that has many fronts. We kind of contend with it, you know, in multiple ways, but I think we all agree that there's more that could be done. And so, I agree. That's why I think, again, having an equity lens on, you know, what we do, you know, can be helpful to make sure we bring back to what, because sometimes, you know, I mean, especially historically with planning and zoning, I mean, there have been a lot of unintended consequences, things that, you know, weren't necessarily tried to be exclusionary necessarily, but, you know, ultimately had that effect. And then, and you can, and that, you know, takes many different forms, but making sure we're very careful in, in what we do before we, you know, approve changes to, to the comp plan, to the zoning ordinance, or even certain projects as they go through. So.
I had one, sorry, can I, can I have one, make one more comment? I agree with that, and I think it can be hard to predict what those outcomes might be, but I do think we need to think really hard about what, what, what could happen based on a variety of different changes. And then there's just one other group that I want us to be thinking about, and those are people with physical disabilities who I think that they're, the city is trying to do a lot of work on providing better facilities, like physical facilities for people who, so they can have an easier time to get around, whether, whether that's folks who are using wheelchairs or folks who are just older and maybe a little unsteady. And, and I think that, you know, we should always be keeping those, that, that group in mind as well when we're making decisions, especially about new developments. I think staff does a great job of that, and obviously, there's ADA laws, but probably also another, another thing to keep in mind.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, it's a multifaceted thing, right? It's disabilities, it's, you know, going beyond just, not just the letter of the ADA, but the spirit in what we do, you know, and like, for example, even what we just looked at, just as an example, I don't, with the trails, I mean, to the extent that, you know, some of those changes may, you know, have ADA implications and what does it mean for other users, you know, to be able to use the trail and the crossings? So, I mean, I mean, there's a good quote in the attachment, which is from, you know, the American Planning Association document, just in their introduction, where it says, "Done with intention, equity is a thread that is woven through the fabric of all plans, regulations, developments, and policy options." I mean, that's kind of an aspirational statement, but, I mean, that's really what we should strive to do. And I think, you know, to a large degree, you know, we have been doing that maybe more piecemeal, but, you know, I think council is looking for boards and commissions to do it more deliberately, you know, holistically and deliberately. And, and so I agree, you know, making, keeping it in the forefront of our mind as opposed to just like this big pie in the sky topic, I think is where, you know, where the rubber meets the road on equity, you know? Because I think, you know, in an abstract level, you know, everyone, I would assume, you know, on this commission and most folks you talk to in the city would, you ask them about, you know, is equity a good thing? They would generally say, sure, it's a good thing, but, but it's, you know, on individual projects, on individual decisions where, you know, there actually are give and takes that, you know, becomes a little bit, you know, more difficult. And so, keeping it in the forefront when we're trying to make those hard decisions, you know, may help have a better, more equitable outcome on some close calls, you know, when we're forced to make some of those close calls. So, so, yeah, I mean, anyone else have any other, other comments on that? I mean, Mr. Fuller, I mean, I think, you know, as far as, I know you have this set up, or Mr. Stoddard set it up, has happened like a work session tonight, and then I think, you know, like a, more of like an action on it in a couple of weeks, you know, what was he envisioning, like a formal, like response to council? I mean, is that, I'm trying to understand kind of where we're heading to, you know, we're kind of introducing this topic tonight, but it's on the agenda again in a couple of weeks. And is that, is that kind of what, what we're thinking?
Yeah, we, Paul and I talked briefly on this item, and he indicated, you know, the idea was to pin some recommendations at the next meeting in two weeks. And so, you know, we have, you know, some thoughts from tonight. I would encourage the group to continue to gel, you know, some, a little more specifics on it. I think we were pretty specific tonight, you know, in terms of the areas to focus on. So, but there may be, you know, some more information. So I think that was the plan. It's, I mean, it really is a policy analysis, and I think, you know, applying an equity lens, as you put it, to future actions that come before the commission is, is, I mean, I think we can indicate some things that are general, and then we can be specific in a few. And I think that's going to be a great start, and then I think we can build on that. So, anyway, I guess you and Paul will talk a little further on it, but I would encourage everybody to continue to think about this, and then, you know, we'll have a little more to go over at the next meeting and formalize some recommendations.
Sure. Ms. Weiss?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment, just in terms of engaging the community. I was thinking about these large development town halls that we're having with boards and commissions now. And I'm thinking about town halls on West Falls Church and the schools, you have town halls over time. It would be, I think, helpful to make more of an effort to, and I know this is hard, it's hard to do, but to engage pockets, you know, communities in the city that maybe don't always show up to those meetings. Like, are we reaching out to residents of the fields? Are we providing, you know, different language options for invitations? But just, you know, if we can engage that small percentage of the city that doesn't, you know, is not 80% white or extremely wealthy, I think that would just help us hear from members of our community who might have a different perspective on some of these sort of large strategic projects and what the implications are for equity.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Ms. Weiss. I mean, like, for example, on Founders Road 2, which is right next to the fields essentially, you know, and outreach to that, that community. And there are various reasons why, you know, a lot of times folks, you know, you know, maybe more, it's not as easy for them to come out to meetings. Sometimes it's, you know, they're working at night, you know, the times when we meet, ironically, you know, their jobs may be shift work and they're working at night and/or they're just, you know, they're balancing many commitments. And so ways to write, to try to solicit that input. I know the city does try to publish a lot of things in Spanish and Vietnamese and some other languages, but to the extent, you know, like on, right on a project like that, that there can be more targeted stuff, you know, in their, you know, local languages, or maybe, you know, information's posted, you know? I don't know if there's like, you know, the manager of the fields can help with outreach on that project as an example, but, but yeah, that's a, that's a great suggestion, to be able to try to, you know, I'm sure we, you know, folks in the city, we're out of a big town, so I'm sure folks have sort of, you know, connections with the certain segments of the, of the city community. And maybe there are people who work in city hall who may, you know, have contacts and know, you know, the right people to help get the word out on some of these, on some of these things. So, yeah, that's a, that's a great, great comment. So, I mean, I guess, you know, we, there are other points people want to make tonight, we can continue to talk, or, you know, again, it sounds like we have a couple of weeks to, we mentioned a couple of specific things tonight. I would say to folks, you know, take the next couple of weeks to maybe continue to, you know, think about, you know, this topic, and ultimately, I think we'll look to, you know, maybe go back to, you know, have staff, you know, help us kind of draft a letter or draft a response to council to, you know, with our recommendations about how the commission can, you know, hit the equity issue, you know, more directly. And again, I know there was the idea about applying that equity lens and maybe be, you know, we should, I mentioned the comp plan and also other, other things that we do, but if there are things that people want to mention specifically beyond what they've mentioned tonight, or say it in a more formal way, feel free to either, I guess, email Paul or me in the ensuing couple of weeks. Otherwise, you know, we'll talk about it more in a couple of weeks and try to gel it down to a, to a list of items that, you know, we can, we can memorialize in some way and formalize. And so, okay, with that, and I don't know if folks have any other questions. Otherwise, that was our last item of the evening, and we're, it's a couple minutes before 10:00, so we're just not too far behind the schedule that Paul estimated. And so, if there's nothing else from anyone on the commission or otherwise, I'll, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night, everybody.